Well, Michelle, thank you for meeting with me today.
You're welcome.
Yes, and we're going to dive right into the questions. We've got seven questions and then we'll go back to those seven questions afterwards. We're keeping this format the same for everyone. Nobody's being treated special or anything like that. So, so let's get right into it. Michelle, can you tell us a little bit about yourself? And what motivated you to run for Oketoks Town Council?
For sure. So my name is Michelle and I moved here with my family 14 years ago. And I've loved Oketoks since the minute we moved here. And actually, we kind of town shopped. And this is where we landed. It had everything we wanted. It was a beautiful view and it had a Costco. So like, you know, you can't beat that. So it was just really good. I've had a lot of different job experiences. My background is in criminal justice. So I've done corrections and I've done by law enforcement. But I've also worked for Canada Post and I've worked in education. Currently, I work at the Oketoks Public Library. I've been there for 13 years and I love it there. I am, I have, I do programming for children and families and seniors, which is great. And I also volunteer a lot and I do respite for people with special needs. So that's who I am, kind of in a nutshell. Why do I want to run? Again, it's because I love Oketoks. I want to be part of the process. I want to be part of the formation of where this town is going. And I think so many things are so great about Oketoks. And I would just want to be part of the process. I like municipal government because of that. We actually have an impact on day to day life, which is so important, like the little things, making sure our snow is removed and that we have ice free pathways. And for me, that can make or break my day, just having that wonderful pathway. So, and I believe that all my life experience and meeting all the different people that I've met over the years can give me a different perspective, a different voice to bring to the table. I do believe that we need to focus a little bit more on economic growth and perhaps tourism. And that potentially could help diversify some of the taxes. That's kind of a hot button as well. And let's focus maybe on some infrastructure, transportation and safety. All of those issues are big talk.
Yeah, absolutely. There's a lot there. So yeah, we will be able to go back to some of the things that you said even in that first answer. So what's your vision for Oketoks over the next four years? And what role do you see yourself playing in helping achieve that vision?
Okay, I want Oketoks to grow in a thoughtful way. I think it takes careful planning. And I think we can balance the residential and the commercial. And so it feels right for the people that live here. Community, the Oketoks is such a great community and I want to continue to maintain that feeling of connection and safety and that we really care about each other. On council, I hope to be a voice for the people, for the residents of Oketoks and make sure that their ideas and concerns help guide all decisions.
Absolutely. In your view, what are the top two or three issues facing Oketoks right now? And how would you approach them if you were elected?
Okay, so some of the things I'm hearing about, of course, are growth and housing. People think that Oketoks is growing way too fast, too quickly. I've done a little bit of research. It's actually not growing as fast as people like to think. It's kind of growing in a moderate way, but it seems really big right now. But I do feel like we need to focus a little bit more on commercial and industrial growth. I think we need to balance that out a little bit. And it would just help, again, diversify some tax rates, I think. In regards to housing, which is another thing, I do like the multi complex buildings. Maybe not potentially the location of where they are, but that's already done. I think it gives more accessible and affordable options to people that are moving to Oketoks, like the younger people, maybe newcomers and seniors. And not everyone wants a house. So I think that's kind of the two things that I keep hearing more and more again.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah, like you've touched on, we continue to face challenges around growth, housing and infrastructure. How do you believe the town should balance development with maintaining a character of livability?
Okay, I think green spaces are huge. I think we need to have, make sure that we put a real good focus on the green spaces and dog parks and all of these things that make Oketoks so great, places that people can meet. Young families love going to the park. I see that behind the library all the time. It's this huge green space. And there's so many families there. They use a new little water park as well. So I think that's important for that balance and that feel of character.
Yeah, absolutely. Many residents want more transparency and involvement in decision making. How would you ensure residents' voices are heard and represented at council?
I agree. I feel like people need to be part of the process. And there needs to be a communication around that. And every decision that is made, I feel like that also needs to be part of it. So I think being available, I love talking to people and just being available online, maybe at events, town halls, different things like that, so that I can make sure that residents' voices are heard. And sometimes people maybe are reluctant to tell you, not all, but to just engage people in those conversations and ask them how they feel about things. People love to have that question asked.
Yeah, absolutely. Town council works as a team also with the foothills county and the province. How would you approach collaboration and compromise to get results for Oketoks?
Okay, I'm a team player. I love team sports. I love all team things. And I believe that teamwork and collaboration is what is needed to get any job done. So I know, and I know that people don't always agree on everything, but I feel like you can always reach a compromise and always have that the heart of the matter is Oketoks and what's best for Oketoks. And I feel like I would be a good contributor to that because I am such a team player. And I'm respectful with fellow councillors and foothills county and the province and whoever is involved in all of the decision making.
If residents remember just one thing about you after listening to this conversation, what should it be?
I want people to remember that I'm here to listen and to serve. And I feel very passionate about the identity of Oketoks and the community spirit of Oketoks that just makes us who we are. And I don't want to lose that. And so I work very hard to continue that and maintain that.
Right, for sure. Awesome. Well, those are, those are the formal questions, but one thing I want to ask you is just how, what was the process of leading you up to this point where you felt the need or led to run for council?
Well, I was greatly encouraged by a lot of people, including my family. I actually thought about it back in 2021, but I wasn't in the right spot. And so now I feel like I'm in a life position where I can give a lot to this position. My kids moved out. So I have less responsibilities at home. My husband works out of town a lot, so I really don't have to cook or clean ever. So I have a lot of time and energy to, to give the people of Oketoks. And I already feel like I'm so involved with the library that I've seen so many people in our community.
For sure. How do you think your background in criminal justice and did you say bylaw as well? You have a background in bylaw? How do you think that's going to impact your position on council?
I feel like it gives me an understanding of policing, of things that are required, things that are needed. And also just, I think it'll help me with like with policy regulations, rules. And because there's always reasoning behind every rule that's formed, every policy that's formed, and maybe not everyone agrees with them. But it's generally for the overall safety of the people.
For sure. You, you mentioned you do, like you volunteer. Can you tell me a little bit more about your volunteer, volunteerism in Oketoks?
Absolutely. I love volunteering. If that could be my job and I didn't have to have an income, I would gladly volunteer. I love it so much. It's something special about it. So in Oketoks, I've always volunteered when my kids were growing up in their schools, in their libraries. I volunteered for the soccer association here in town. I continue to volunteer for the town of Oketoks at any event or really anything that's kind of going on. I did the duck race last weekend.
Okay.
It was a lot of fun. I also volunteered for the Calgary Zoo and, and many of the theater houses in the city.
Okay, awesome. Another thing you mentioned, you talked about economic growth and tourism. You also talked about commercial and industrial growth. Can, can we talk all about that and kind of talk through about like what's your idea is around that?
Well, I, I think a lot of people commute to the city. And I think it would be really great if more people could work here in Oketoks. And so I'm not exactly sure what that looks like. I don't even like, no, I know there's a bigger plan and there has to be a lot behind it. But I think if we could attract more businesses, maybe bigger businesses, not necessarily like the box stores, but more industries and like, for example, I went to Expressions to get my, my signs made and the Oketoks print and copy to get all my cards made. There's so many of these great little businesses and I don't know if people know that they can stay in town to do a lot of these things. And I think that's hugely important to just educate people on that and also to bring more businesses like that into Oketoks. Not sure if I answered that fully, but.
No, for sure. And then, and then what about, what about tourism? Like what's something that you think that could draw? Why would people want to come to Oketoks?
Well, first of all, why wouldn't they want to come to Oketoks? It's so great. So I think a lot of people come already for our community events. I think we need to potentially advertise a little bit more for that. I think we could do more sporting, bigger events where people actually have to come and stay in our hotels, eat at our restaurants, things like that. And maybe, I don't know, I like, I'm not sure of other ideas. But I do feel like tourism is this outside income that people can bring into Oketoks.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, it's something that obviously this, this town needs is more hotels. Like we're 30,000 and growing and we have
two?
Three, two, two, you had three, four, like, you know, just you got some motels as well. We'll throw them in there as well. But it's just, so if you do, like, there's big tournaments like Oketoks, I don't know, out on the, on DAK, we host the Fury Tournament, which is, I think it's North America's biggest girls softball tournament in the month of June. Like it's crazy.
I did not even know that.
Yeah, I know. There's so many different events that are going on, but nobody can stay in town, right? So it's hard. I think it's hard to develop tourism. If we don't have hotels, right? But
Oh, for sure.
Yeah. So no, everybody and, and everybody certainly has opinions about almost everything and, and you know, just like following different online chats, social media chats that are going on. It's, yeah, you have to be so careful. So how, how will you address people that are kind of, you know, being vocal, they're pushing the envelope on certain things? What are, what's kind of the little step that if you start dealing with somebody online, that seems like, okay, they're starting to cross a few lines. They're being a little bit harsh with me. What, how do you see yourself walking through that?
See, I think that's kind of where my background in criminal justice actually potentially would help because in, you don't engage, like you don't engage. Most people just want to vent and, and just be heard. They really do. And if you're just that person who can just stay calm and listen to them, they generally talk through it and then they're okay. And of course, there's a lot of different body postures and a lot of different things you can do to trigger people or not trigger people. And I feel like I'm, I'm pretty good at that.
Yeah, for sure. No, you're right. Like, you know, you, you start pushing back and you push their buttons or and it's easy when you're sitting in front of a computer and you're typing, you're angry and blah, blah, blah. But face to face, well, face to face, obviously it can be dangerous, but yeah, face to face is, obviously everything dissipates quite a bit if you're face to face with a person. I know that sometimes it escalates, but but you really see them, you see the body language and what, how they're talking and all that stuff. So yeah, that's, that's something a little bit already in this election process that I'm really concerned about is just the, the tone of stuff that's going online and a little bit of the discourse, right? The, the negative discourse. I love, I love the discourse. That's why I wanted, got this podcast up and rolling, just want to have conversations, get to know people, highlight people, highlight organizations, all that stuff. But even, even what I'm doing, I'm, and I guess it's part of the discourse, I certainly, I don't, what I'm saying is I don't think I could run for council because I'd probably, my, my skin, I don't think is thick enough. Because sometimes you're going to need a pretty thick skin, right?
Oh, absolutely, you do.
Yeah, yeah. So you mentioned green spaces, like with the new development that's going on right now, like are you concerned with the amount of green spaces? Or do you feel that there's enough green spaces that are?
I haven't been in the newest one, just north of town. So I really can't speak to that. But some of the most recent ones, where was I? Up like in the mountain heights area. They had a great big park there. I did notice that. I think for the most part, but I can't speak to the newest ones. I haven't been in those areas. Yeah. And pathways, pathways are huge. I think that's what's so great about Oketoks too, is I feel, and that's what really was drawn to me. I love all the pathways. I've always felt really safe. Walk back and forth to work, you know, even in, even at night. And it's safe here and those pathways are so important. And I think we're, we do a really good job at cleaning those as well. And then people use them a lot. They use the green spaces a lot as well.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, no, I think the, the newer areas, and I think that's a maybe, I, I think it's just because those newer areas are so exposed and they push so much up, up against the road that everybody's like, okay, like what's going on? If those areas were up northeast and not everybody that lives in town has to drive past them every day, would they be concerned? And I think, you know, I've talked to other candidates about that. And I do think what the concern is, is okay, we have two new developments going in and we feel that these new developments are seriously impeding the flow of traffic and all the, all the high density housing are pushed right up against the road. So you see it. So I think that's what everybody's thinking is, is going on there. So I think there's a little bit of a perception thing going on right now and a little bit of a fear because it's just like, okay, we have two new communities and we got all these traffic lights that just slowed. Cause yeah, we are bedroom community Calgary. There's lots of people that are driving to Calgary all the time, every morning, coming back every day and their commute has been slowed down by numerous sets of lights.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And I think, I think that you hit the nail on the head there. It's because it's just like right there. Like when I first moved here as well, Darcy Ranch was this huge big field. And it was lovely and the big trees that lit up at Christmas, like it was really lovely. And so it has changed. The look has changed. And I don't necessarily love that either. I really don't. But it is there now. And so we have to accept it and deal with that. But I think, you know, these big multi-family buildings, I feel like, you know, they could be potentially in some different areas in the future. Now, what we have, we have, right? Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So what are, what are some of the things? You said, you said you raised your, you raised your family at Oketoks?
Yeah, absolutely.
What are some of the things, you know, throughout the years of raising your family and then now where your kids are at and all that stuff? Like what are some of the things that you reflect back on as good, good things about Oketoks, the things that kept you here, the things that made you fall in love with this community?
Um, the biggest thing is when we first moved here, it was just that sense of safety. We felt really safe. I could just let my kids kind of go wherever they wanted to go on their bikes and walk with their friends. And it's, we, I didn't worry about them. They were safe. And there was everything that we wanted, like there was sports teams. They both played soccer. And the schools were, are phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal schools. The high school is just, yeah, it's so good. And so that's what I really, really liked. And it's just so pretty here, like the river and the mountains is just beautiful. I walk a lot. And I really like that. I walk to work. I don't have to commute. So I do appreciate that as well. But I also like that we, I'm only 40 minutes from the airport.
Right. Yeah. 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 Especially with Stony, like that's really changed everything. I know that when we used to have early morning flights, we used to stay at the airport because going up Deerfoot, you just wouldn't know how long it would be. You get caught in an accident and you miss your flights, right? But now with Stony, absolutely. There's, there's so many, so many great things. And yeah, when, when it comes to the price of housing, I know that's always a little bit of concern. Obviously, we want to have a place that, you know, the, it feels like the mandate of the current council is to, it's, it's the, it's a place for everyone, which I, I think is great. Obviously, we want to have everyone here. But how, how do you see the, the price of housing? Like it feels like that's something that we, everybody says they want to try to control, but it seems like nobody's in control of the price of housing. But what, what are things that we need to do to, you know, keep the price of housing down? Make sure that we have low income housing as well? Like what's, what are your thoughts along those lines?
Yeah, that's a tough one. Well, you're in real estate. You know, like it's, that's a tough one. Like nobody wants their house value to go down. That's for sure. But to buy into the market is, is tricky too. I think a lot of it is because there's just not enough on the market. So of course that keeps prices higher. But I do like the idea of different kinds of buildings, like condos and the multifamily buildings. Because not everyone wants a house. Some people just want simpler living or can only afford a smaller thing. And I think that really helps is to have a bit more of that, like not just houses.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Like the house price, I don't know. I think maybe because if there's a bit of variety, maybe that'll help. I really, I really don't know.
Yeah, like I, I think, like right now, like Calgary and, you know, surrounding areas, like the housing is kind of struggling right now. The one blip is Oketoks. Oketoks is still, yeah, we've, we've certainly seen the, yeah, we've seen the prices decreased, like they were skyrocketing. And then, you know, ever since last year, they're slowly been coming down. But I think one thing is just the, like we talked, you talked about earlier, just the, the growth rate's not as fast as everybody thinks here in Oketoks. But once that water line comes on, that's when it's almost like the shotgun goes off and the race starts and the building begins, right? Once the access of the water is there, I do think things are going to really change. And the infrastructure, like I think potentially, and it's, it's hard and I'm not blaming town council. Like I think they've, they've done a, they've done a good job, but I think just balancing that infrastructure as to prioritizing, like yes, we were build, working on some old infrastructure that needed to be replaced. I don't think anybody's debating the fact that that pipeline, you know, even downtown replacing that, like, I was talking to the mayor and she said that some of that pipeline was disintegrating as soon as they touched it, like it was ready to go. Like, so good call on that, right? But it's just like, okay, like where are we at with our traffic flow? To start looking at, you know, potentially that water line's going to be on in a year. And we are going to see substantial growth. And is our infrastructure ready to move ahead with that? Like, how do you see yourself being a part of that?
I definitely think that infrastructure needs to be in place before we really expand. I was reading the, the report and there's, they, they're saying like a hundred thousand people, but not till 2080 is sort of the projected idea. And so we, you know, with that being said, if we take that time and build that infrastructure first, I've heard talk about, we need a ring road and twinning 32nd and all these great ideas, which I definitely think they do need to be looked at. But of course that takes a heck of a lot of money.
Yes.
Right? And so, yeah.
But sorry, can I cut you off? Like, yes, I understand. It takes a lot of money. But if we can have that plan in place for where the ring road is going to go, even if we get that plan in place, ready to go right now, so that when that time comes, let's say it's 2050, that area is already, people know that they're building their houses there that, okay, this ring road is coming as opposed to, oh my gosh, you know, like, like they did with 32nd, they planned for it. But now it's just like, oh my gosh, like it's on the 10 year plan. But we're going to have to do it a lot faster. And it's just, do we have the money to do that kind of thing, right?
Oh, for sure.
So, you know, if we don't have the money to keep up with the, the infrastructure needs already, shouldn't we really be pushing the envelope and looking at the population growth? You know what I mean? Like it's a little bit of a balancing act.
Totally, it's totally a balancing act. And definitely you need to be proactive in all these things. Like these are huge decisions and they affect people's lives. Like you can't just jump into these things and, and be reactive, like being proactive is, is the key for sure and plan.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. No, what's, what are some things that yourself or your family like to do while you're, while you've got some downtime?
Oh, you cut out a little bit there.
While you got some downtime, what are some things that you and your family like to do in town?
I like to walk. We like to go camping. My, I parents have a place out in B C. I love going there so I can just hang out on the beach. This tiny, tiny community of like, I don't know, maybe 300 people. So it's pretty low key. You don't really do anything. So that's what I like to do a lot. And I volunteer a lot. I really enjoy that. It kind of really fills up my battery.
Yeah, no, that's awesome. No, it's every phase that my family has been in, it's been phenomenal, right? From bringing the babies home to sending them off to junior high and high school, like you mentioned earlier, like the, the, the school systems have been fabulous, have served my kids and our family very, very well. And so we are certainly grateful for that. But yeah, knowing that the schools have some growing pains as well, right?
Oh, for sure. Have you all been in Oketoks?
I, I have, I've, I lived here, I want to say 2004, five,
Okay.
six, somewhere in there. And then I moved to, moved back home. Home was in Saskatchewan. Oil and gas took me back to Saskatchewan for a bit, but honestly, I couldn't wait to get back to Alberta. Don't tell anybody I said that, you know?
I went to Northern B C, I get it.
Yeah, yeah. And yeah, we wanted, we, we did when I wanted to give my wife a fair chance because she wasn't really too familiar with the area. Thought, well, let's, let's look in Calgary and then we came here and we were looking, we were looking in Auburn Bay. But then we came here and we realized this is the spot for us, like the, even just the, the spacing between, between housing, houses back then was phenomenal. And you go to Auburn Bay and it's just packed in there. Like, you know, you got the community of Auburn Bay and it's, I think that's a third of, I think it's like 10,000, if not more people living just right in Auburn Bay. And you just think of the way that we are spread out and we have been very spoiled and we do know that we have to be better. We have to be good stewards of the land. But I do, we do want to keep the characteristics of this town, right?
Really, I, absolutely.
You know, I think, you know, things that happened last night, you know, with the shooting.
Read briefly about that, that's.
Yeah. That's, that's feels like that's big city crime. I know that shootings have happened in Oketoks before. There's a, there's, there's a part of me that I, yeah, and I know that everybody's so sensitive of private, privacy and all that stuff. But it's almost like, okay, it'd be nice if the police were, were allowed to, and I know I'm just bumping my gums. It's never going to happen, but there's bad dudes living beside you that they at least have to let people know, right?
Yeah.
And we're going to have bad people, any, all the time. That's going to be a part of the, unfortunately a part of the DNA. But I think, I think the mayor said it very clearly. It's, it's keeping tabs. It's talking. It's, you know, sometimes people don't like nosy neighbors, but sometimes nosy neighbors catch on to things a lot faster. And bad dudes don't like nosy neighbors, right? I'm not saying they're going to do anything. They're, they're going to not feel like they can do this stuff normally if they feel like the community's watching. And you go to Calgary and the community's not watching. You can, I, I lived in a community in Calgary for a while and my neighbor right across the street would never make eye contact with me. Never, would never even lift his head. And I'm like, oh, okay, that's too bad. But, because yeah, you want to look out for each other. You want to be there for one another, right?
Those neighbors are the best security, like they know, they know what's going on. It's fantastic.
Yeah, absolutely. So yeah, and it's, it is part, uh, yeah. And keeping those pathways friendly, right? Saying hi to people, even if they don't say hi back at you, you've passed them time and time again. Just keep saying hi, break them down, break them down, you know?
Every time. And a smile, just, yeah, it just helps bring people together as well. It's just that simple. I learned that in the library as well. Like it's, sometimes you're the only person that's made contact with them.
Yes, for sure. Yeah. Well, Michelle, I appreciate you. I appreciate the fact that you've stepped up to the plate to run. That's, that's putting yourself out there, right? Yeah.
It's exciting, but it is kind of scary for sure.
Yeah, like, you know, you're going to get, you're going to get drilled with questions. You're going to get questions that you may not be ready for, but you know, I, a few of the people that the candidates that I've met with, I, I just want to remind them like when, when or if you get in, just remember, remember these thoughts and feelings you're having now as to why you're getting in. You know, a lot of times you get, well, and it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if you get into a profession, you get into, you know, a role like councillor, where you have these great ambitions at the start and then sometimes you get sucked into just the, with the status quo. But remember those things, write the, write the things down as to why you're, why you're running. What's, what's motivating to run and look at that card regularly? I think, I think we all, there's, there's so many great people running. There's so many great people that have served in the past. And I think people just want to be part of what's going on because they realize that this is a great town.
It really is. Yeah. And it's to keep that going. It really is. Yeah. And it's to keep that going.
For sure. Do you have any uh closing thoughts? Any uh reasons why I should vote for Michelle?
You should vote for me because I feel like I really have. Here we go. I really feel like I know the people of, of the community of Okatoks. I really do. Like, I see so many people come through the library. Like, we have a huge amount of people that come to the library, actually. And so I talk to people all the time, and especially families, and it's so friendly to families living here. And that is so important to keep that and that programming and that getting people plugged into the community and involved.
Absolutely. And you're, you're exactly right. Like, it is so friendly for, for families, you know, even just think of all the driving you'd have to do if you had two or three kids and you're driving to hockey, you're driving to cheer, you're driving to, you know, gymnastics and you're driving all over the place in Calgary. But here, you know, you can get, you know, the, the, the drive time started to add up a little bit, but it's just, I think it was just, yeah, but.
And that's where those neighbors come into play as well, right? We work together. We all work together to make it better.
Yeah, absolutely. Michelle, thank you. Uh, I appreciate you uh stepping up to the plate. Have a great day.
Yeah, thank you. You too. Bye bye.
Okay, bye bye.